Being here tonight. Welcome to the City of Tarpon Springs City Commission Meeting on October 12th. I now call the meeting to order at 6:30. Let's see, before we go to roll call, we need to make, need to have a motion for Commissioner Terapanyi. He was not able to make it tonight because of a business matter that arose. Is there a motion on the board?
Motion to excuse.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vatic Yodis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes. And Irene, we need to go for roll call for attendance, please.
Mayor Lahusis is absent and excused. Vice Mayor Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Terapanyi is absent and excused. Commissioner Donovan?
Here.
Commissioner Vatic Yodis?
Here.
Thank you. And just a reminder, the mayor is over in Greece on the sister city trip. That's why I'm sitting in the mayor's seat tonight. Happy to be here. It's great to be with you all tonight. We are going to invite Chaplain or Reverend Christina Greis, the Director of Mission and Ministry at Advent Health North Pinellas, for the invocation. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Please bow your heads with me. Holy God, first of all, I want to thank you for these men and women who have dedicated their lives, their time, their talents, to serve this city and contribute to their well-being. I pray for each one of them, for their ideas, their dreams, their strategies, their initiatives, their plans, that you may guide them and keep them on the right path. But I also want to pray for strength and wisdom as they face challenges and obstacles and difficult decisions. May you strengthen them and keep them focused. Now I pray for this meeting tonight, for your wisdom, for your presence, and for your spirit. May conversations and discussions be seasoned with grace and kindness, and may decisions be made for the good of this city and for those who call Tarpon Springs their home. And it's in your loving name that we pray tonight. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and the principles of liberty, justice, and tolerance. Reverend Greis. There's a couple announcements I want to make. There's two items that are being deferred. One is in the Consent Agenda 3C. It's a Holiday Boat Parade deferred to November 2nd. And then also item number 15 is Ordinance Amending, Ordinance 2021-14, amending Section 19109 of the Land Development Code relating to A-Frame Signs. That's being deferred to November 16th, 2021. We are going to go to the public comments for the items that will not be discussed tonight. Please come forward, state your name, address for the record, and you'll have four minutes. And these are items that will not be discussed on record tonight. I mean, sorry, on the agenda.
Pier to Lax 514, Ashland Avenue, Tarpon Springs. And before I get to my readings, the city and its infinite wisdom a few months ago passed rules or procedures that don't allow your citizens to communicate with you by email, phone call, or Zoom during your meetings. Yet, other municipalities and counties still offer this option in various forms. Pinellas County now is asking for comments on its comprehensive plan and doing it through Zoom. And even in your own staff still does Zoom meetings. Yet, this board does not. Next, my next issue is with regards to the meeting last week, with regards to the selections for the stakeholders. Thought it was a little deficient in one facet. The only thing in the backup and online was Commissioner Vatic Yodis's letter, but there was no listing of your choices. I had to actually ask Renee for a copy of it, and she sent it to me. And I found it quite interesting that one commissioner packed it with the same people that he works with and is affiliated with. And they're all the real estate types that are the people that can't cut up tarpon fast enough. And that's Commissioner Terapanyi. For those who don't know who was on his list, Ryan Dodridge. He's registered under SunBiz as his agent for Terapanyi Banther Associates. Tommy Kalores, he's a real estate agent. Look him up. Shows his address, 600 East Tarpon Avenue. Cindy Terapanyi, well, we know the connection there. George Andriotis, one of his biggest clients. And ironically, Mr. Dodridge shares offices with him. And Matthew Hush, who is president of Aries Roofing, a very fine company. But it's all the same network of people who can't cut tarpon up fast enough. And it just seems like it was a stacked deck. So, my reading for today is from Proverbs 3, or 4, 1 through 19. And this is Wisdom is Supreme. Listen, my sons, to a father's instructions. Pay attention and gain understanding. I give you sound learning, so do not forsake my teaching. When I was a boy in my father's house, still tender and an only child of my mother, he taught me and said, "Lay hold of my words with all your heart. Keep my commands, and you will live." Get wisdom. Get understanding. Do not forget my words or swerve from them. Do not forsake wisdom, and she will protect you. Love her, and she will watch over you. Wisdom is supreme, therefore get wisdom. Though it costs all you have, get understanding. Esteem her, and she will exalt you. Embrace her, and she will honor you. She will set a garland of grace on your head and present you with a crown of splendor. Listen, my son, accept what I say, and the years of your life will be many. I'll guide you in the way of wisdom and lead you along straight paths. When you walk, your steps will not be hampered. When you run, you will not stumble. Hold on to these instructions. Do not let it go. Guard it well, for it is your life. Do not set foot on the path of the wicked or walk in the way of the evil men. Avoid it. Do not travel on it. Turn from it and go on your own way, for they cannot sleep till they do evil. They are robbed of slumber till they make someone fall. They eat the bread of wickedness and drink the wine of violence. The path of the righteous is like the first gleam of dawn, shining ever bright, ever brighter till the full light of day. Thank you.
Chris Roboski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. Again, I'd like to remind you, if you haven't yet watched the planning and zoning meeting about the Anclot Harbor project, please go do so. Valuable information in there. And again, it's the most pro-developer planning and zoning that this city has ever seen. And yet, almost every member recognized that the Anclot Harbor project cannot be built as designed. It's too dangerous. And our children's lives cannot be cast aside for a developer. So, it can't be profits above people. And each member, especially the chair, recognize that. There will be loss of life the way that project is designed. Can't be built that way. It is a death trap. It's a ticking time bomb. And you just can't let it blow up in our city. You have the opportunity to vote that project down, to send them packing. Ask them to redevelop some dilapidated part of Tarpon Springs. They do not have to tear up pristine land and create a potential lethal traffic situation. Not to mention the flooding inside and the people that would be trapped in there. I mean, it's gonna flood. You all know that. It's not a question of if, it's just when. When's it gonna flood? So you can't put those people's lives in danger. And the people's lives going up and down 19. And during that meeting, Carl Wagenfor was asked why he chose to film a certain time of day. And he said, "Because that time of day was literally the most dangerous time of day." But there are many dangerous times of day beyond US 19, as you know. Not to mention when the traffic's bumper to bumper, somebody who's got to get out and try to make a left U-turn, I mean, they're gonna wind up in Hernando before they can turn around. So, any way you slice it, it's not a good fit. But at least consider the lives that you will be saving by sending them packing. There are so many reasons to say no to that project. But human life, above all, has to be respected over profits and developers. And once you look at all the material that each of those planning and zoning members looked at, you will see that it's just, it's a death trap. Can't be built the way they've designed it. I mean, hell, they, even the guy from DOT said you can't have two entrances on US 19 during the testimony in here. So, I don't know what more it would take for you to understand that you just can't, you just can't allow them to move forward with it. And so my hope is that you will correct the situation on the 26th. Not to mention all the environmental impacts that would take place. And the deaths of those creatures that live on the property. Can't have that on your conscience either. And our town can't afford to lose any more pristine land. And we certainly can't afford to lose a child's life on US 19. Please do the right thing. Say no to Morgan Group. Thank you.
Good evening all. Mike Eisner, 1515 Riverside Drive. I'm glad that you all have deferred the A-Frames for November, but I would strongly like you to consider from now till then, this town should not be making decisions on what materials the A-Frame should be made out of. I would like to see and agree with you that if the A-Frames are put in a place where somebody is gonna get injured, pedestrian, I'm all for it. But when you start making decisions on what materials they should be made from, or whether they should be made from chalk or magic marker, or we're really micromanaging people's businesses beside the fact, most of these people have complained, they're coming off of a, you know, a COVID situation where money is not flowing in. Why should they have to buy new signs? Because we have, you know, unfortunately, it's a silly rule. And we're not that kind of town. We should be more inviting and more helpful to business, not to make the business harder to run. So, from now till then, I hope you kind of decide that you, we will not get involved with making decisions on what kind of signs the people have. Whatever they have, that's up to their business. You know, we don't decide what kind of sign they have on their store. We don't decide on a lot of things that a business runs. It's up to the business to be successful or not successful. It's not up to you guys to decide. And I wish, you know, you'd just stay in your lane and not get overbearing on what, because there's no choice. I mean, you could keep putting more and more restrictions. I want to see business grow here. I don't want to see business run away from here. But we don't have the greatest reputation right now for businesses and permits and things like that, and I'd like to see that turn around. So, I hope you all consider when you're making that vote, what you're voting on. And I thank you for all your time and trouble. I know it's not an easy job you have. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments for the items that will not be, that are not listed tonight on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we're now going to go to the Consent Agenda. Number one is Satisfaction and Release of Leans. Number two, attorney fees, TRAS, DANIO, LLP, invoice October 4th. Special events. A, Thanksgiving Arts and Craft Festival. B, there's Snow Place like Tarpon Springs. C has been deferred, which is the Holiday Boat Parade. D, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration. Four, Grant Program for Historical Pictures and Murals on Buildings. Five, Increase File Number 210200-N-AM, Single Source Purchase of AquaTech Original Equipment, Manufactured Parts. Six, Increase File Number 210053-N-AM, Single Source Purchase of Butcher Municipal OME Parts and Services. Number seven, Ratify Increase to File Number 200006-C-JL. Water and Wastewater Supplies Utilizing City of St. Petersburg RFP Number Two, I'm sorry, 7205. Number eight, Ratify Increase to File Number 210052-N-AM, Single Source Purchase of Pierce Fire Apparatus OEM Parts and Services. Number nine is Reject Single Bid Submitted for Number 220004-B-JL, Cycladia Cemetery Mausoleum Roof Repair. Number 10, File Number, Award File Number 220019-N-AS, Maintenance Support and Equipment for Motorola Radios. Does Commissioner want to pull anything off this list? Okay, are there any public comments on these items, the Consent Items 1 through 10? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve items 1 through 10, with the exception of 9, and that one would be to reject single bid submitted for bid 22004-B-JL, Cycladia Cemetery Mausoleum Roof Repair.
Just for clarification, that's for an affirmative vote, right?
It's a motion to reject. The others were motions to approve, and this one is a motion to reject, which is, I think that's an affirmative. Is that correct?
So, is it, is it your, is it your intent to leave it on consent, but you want to vote no to 9?
No.
Or do you want 9 pulled off?
I want to reject that. It's a motion, it's based, all the title says is reject. So I want to approve rejecting it. The wording is a little awkward.
Well, I think, I think a motion to approve the Consent Agenda is sufficient, because the staff's recommendation is to reject the bid. So if you approve the Consent Agenda...
Let me clarify. Motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 1 through 10.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vatic Yodis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes. Okay, we're gonna go to the Special Consent Agenda. This is item number 11, Authorize Acceptance of Grant for Mobility Beach Mats for Sunset Beach. Mr. Smith, thank you for being here tonight. This is passed off to you now.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Carr. Paul Smith, Acting City Manager this evening. And the city manager helped put this item together, and he wanted to be sure to acknowledge a few individuals that helped make this a possibility. And I want to name them, and pardon me if I mispronounce a name, I've only seen these names written, so. But with us tonight is Jody Armstrong, and she's with the Outreach for the Disability Achievement Center. But also Patrice Shad, who organized this whole effort and brought it to the attention of the city via Commissioner Vatic Yodis. And the city manager wanted to recognize those efforts with this idea. So, with that, I'm gonna ask Ms. Jody Armstrong, as I introduced earlier, to give an overview of the project.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you very much for inviting me this evening. I am Jody Armstrong, Disability Achievement Center's Director of Outreach. We are the Center for Independent Living that serves Pinellas and Pasco County. We serve people of all ages and all disabilities, and we are strong advocates for all disability equal access issues. For the last three years, a year, actually, it'll be three years in December, the Pinellas County created the Pinellas County Council for Persons with Disabilities, and I chair that, that committee. Our first meeting was Treasure Island's introduction of their new Mobi mat. There was a gentleman that is one of our consumers. He has a traumatic brain injury, and he came to me after that meeting and said, "Jody, we need to do this. We need to get these everywhere." And I followed his lead, and I says, "I'll do it. If this is something that you believe that we want or that we need, let's go." So for two and a half years, I've visited city managers, park managers, the county, the cities, up and down the beaches, attending commission meetings, asking them to please lay down Mobi mats in certain areas that make the most sense, where there's, where there's parking and accessible, other accessibility features. And Gulfport was the only city that said, "Yep, okay, we'll do it. Put one down." Everyone else said, "Show me the money. If you can find me a funder, we can talk." Well, in June, Help Us Gather, which is another nonprofit organization that was created to help people with disabilities gather. It's an online calendar of events that, that draws people with disabilities and gives that population things to do. They were able, they were successful in getting a young gentleman who uses a wheelchair, a modeling job for a surf-style surf, surf shop in downtown Clearwater, and they did the shoot, the photo shoot on the Mobi mat in Treasure Island. And this was HUG's first sighting of a Mobi mat. And they got all excited, and they were promoting the modeling, the person with the disability in the modeling, and they were on the news. And the gentleman I spoke of earlier, who said has the traumatic brain injury, calls me, says, "Jody, you gotta call them. They know about the mats. They're gonna get this thing rolling." I says, "Yes, I understand. I know that we've done this for two and a half years. Let me call Rob, and I know who it is." So we were talking to the founder, and she says, "Well, how much are these mats?" Because I told her all the cities, everywhere we've been, everyone we've got drawings for, every quote we have. And she's, I said, "Well, the mats are between 5,000 and 20,000, depending on the length of them." And she stops, and she pauses, and she says, "Well, you know, we have a family foundation that this is a perfect project for. Let's start with three." That was in June, and nothing happened. Everyone's afraid to apply to FDEP and FWC for permits. I'm a former mayor. I'm an attorney. I've done this before. I can do this. So, we now have interest, where I've been put out the second, when things were slowing down, she says, "Why isn't anything happening?" She says, "This next news release will get them. If this doesn't get them, nothing will." And at that, at that newsletter, this is where everybody picked up on and said, this is where she said, "We will pay for any mat that any beach municipality wants to put down." And guess what? You're here now. This is wonderful. So, when the project is all said and done, we will have 19 mats in Pinellas County, four in Pasco, making us the most accessible beaches in the state. So, not only do we have the most, most beautiful beaches in the country, we can then start beginning, begin to advertise and tout destination tourism for people with disabilities, because we will now also have the most accessible beaches. I thank you so much for, and I thank Tom very, very much for meeting me out at Sunset Beach and talking about what your project would look like. And you don't need, you don't need to go through the FDEP permitting hoops. Tom has already forwarded to FWC the drawings. That's all they wanted. As soon as those come back, we hope that you will approve the acceptance of this grant, and funding will go through. We'll order the mats, and you'll be the first ones to have them down. I'm just thrilled. Thank you. Thank you for, for supporting this project.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your help with this and bringing it forward to Tarpon Springs. I believe we, Paul, you recognized the resident, correct, who brought this forward?
Yes, I did. Ms. Patrice Shad.
Thank you very much for being here tonight, and thank you for that recommendation. We want to go to public comment first, and then we'll go to commissioner comments with staff questions at that point. Are there any public comments on this item?
Good evening. Robin Sanger, 1630 Lonesome Pine Lane, Tarpon Springs. I think this is a wonderful idea. As Commissioner Delakis mentioned earlier, the more we can include our residents, the better. Anyone who's not participating in our city because they can't physically access a part of our city, that's not right. I know people who are homebound because they're in chairs, who can't go to Music on the Beach, who can't attend some of the wonderful functions because of mobility limitations. So this is a great step in the right direction. I thank all of the folks who stepped forward to fund this, and thanks to the city's city manager, Tom Funchon, and everyone who played their part in this. Thank you so much.
Any other public comments on this item tonight? Okay. Uh, we will go to Commissioner Vaticiotis. Did you have any comments on this item?
Oh, uh, thank you, Vice Mayor Carr. Uh, actually, it was, um, pretty interesting, and it's kind of the way I think that resident interaction with our government should work. Um, Mrs. Shant had emailed me, um, about the idea because of her familiarity with me of my posting informational, um, city information on Facebook. So, um, I, as usual, I responded to her, and I just thought it was an excellent idea. And I just kind of wondered, why hadn't we thought about this before? And then, um, I mentioned that I would forward that to the city manager and, um, and the emails in your backup, and, and, um, Mr. LaCorus, um, looked at it. He made the phone calls. I think he contacted Ms. Armstrong. And, um, and we quickly moved through, uh, talking to DEP, recognizing that we own Sunset Beach out there, so there was no, uh, land's lease or any environmental permitting that was needed, which I know from Ms. Armstrong, that's a dream-type project too, without having to go through all the regulatory agencies. So, um, we thought that we would have to wait until, because of the timing of it, um, I thought it would be a good idea to wait for the mayor to come back, uh, because I know he's interested in our seniors and things of that nature. But, uh, Mr. LaCorus, our city manager, uh, wanted to strike while the iron was hot. If we could get the money, let's get it before anybody changed their minds. So he went ahead and agended this, certainly, um, I agreed to it. There was no, there was no problem with me. And so that's why it's be here before you. I think we have to simply accept it as, uh, as a grant. And, uh, Ms. Armstrong, I don't know about the amount or anything like that. We hadn't talked about that. But I, I understood it was about $20,000 for this project, for our project?
No, not, nowhere near.
Did we lessen that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, somewhere, uh, what we, the quote we had, I think, was 8,000? But it, the, it's gonna go up because, um, the quote was for five-foot-wide mats, and we want six and a half feet so that two chairs can pass.
That'd be great.
Or somebody with a, with a, a beach cart can go this way, or somebody had a chair or a walker can come this way. So nobody gets stuck out in no man's land.
Yeah, that's excellent information, and, and, um, I, I'm hoping that the city staff can put this project on our website so the residents can see it. I, I think we should have probably had a little more of a discussion, like the width and the length, and we have a, basically a photograph rendering of it right here. It's the first time that I think our, uh, mobility impaired residents will have access to the, to the shoreline, to the water's edge, as I described in my email.
Um, it's not gonna go all the way to the water's edge, because we don't want to see degradation, and we don't want to see the mat sinking in, and the wave action will actually sink it eventually. So it's gonna get real close.
Close enough.
Close enough, very close.
Closer than where they can get to now.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, and that's one of, I wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. Uh, Tom, I got a couple of questions for you real quick. It looks like, are we adding, or is the city adding, um, additional handicap spots and removing a, a parking spot? And then are they just moving the handicap spots, or are they adding additional ones to, um, increase additional handicap spots out of the beach?
We're gonna take the section that we first come around a turn there and turn those into handicap spots. So we're taking the original spots over and turn them over to handicap.
Okay.
Yes.
So the original handicap spots that are there now on the other side of the beach, they're still gonna stay there, though?
Uh, we'll look at the numbers and make sure that we don't, you know, we'll try to balance them out, but we'll make sure they meet the minimum, uh, handicap spots for ADA.
Okay. And then is one being eliminated for the, the ramp to get on the sidewalk?
Uh, yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm looking at it correctly.
And we'll put that ramp in ourselves, too, so.
Okay, is there a timeline on when this would be installed?
Once I get the okay from, uh, from regulatory committee, yeah, we'll, we'll get it done as soon as possible.
Okay, what about tripping hazards, if you're walking across it or going across the beach? Any issues with that, or what is that actually?
It, it's possible. I'm sure when we first put it in, uh, we'll have some adjustments to make to it. Uh, one thing I do is, once a week, we have a crew out there every Friday morning cleaning and setting up, so we'll, we'll be on top of it and watch it. I'm sure we'll have to make some adjustments, but, uh, I don't see, I really don't see much issues there.
Okay. Commissioner Donovan, do you have any questions, comments?
I don't have any questions. Um, I think I can count on one hand the amount of items we see that everybody can get excited about and agree on. Um, this is definitely one of those. So I just want to thank Ms. Ms. Shad, Ms. Armstrong, Commissioner Vaticiotis for moving this forward, and our city manager, Mr. Funchon, for getting the ball rolling on our end. So, thank you, guys.
Okay. Chair, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Yes. We're moving on to item number 12. This is replacement of Sunset Beach pavilions.
Yes, this item also, Tom Funchon can speak to this. Um, this is in response to one of the pavilions at Sunset Beach beginning to fail. So Tom took a look at some options for, um, handling that one, but also looking forward into the future that he wanted to share with you.
Uh, good evening. Tom Funchon, Public Works Director. Uh, yeah, uh, we have eight picnic pavilions at Sunset Beach, and of course, they date back to the, to the early 80s. And they've been used for everything from, from weddings to birthday parties to typical beach picnics and so on. Uh, they're constructed of concrete footers, four-inch concrete slabs, cinder blocks, wood framing, and tin roofs. Uh, we've cleaned and painted them multiple times over the years and repaired them, and now they're kind of reaching a useful life. As you know, uh, pavilion number eight, which sits on that furthest northwest corner, uh, began to fail this past spring. It's separated from the trusses and those feathers were caused actually by a couple of Australian pines that sit between number eight and number seven. Uh, so we had to take that one down for safety reasons. Uh, actually, the picture we have in there showing the replacements is, is only a year old, and that's with the condition of the, uh, the pavilion. It went down pretty fast. Recommendations I have here is to remove the two pine trees, which we should do anyhow. Uh, they are invasive. Uh, rebuild the same type of construction to match the remaining pavilions. Uh, and then plant a couple of new trees just on the opposite side, uh, along the shore, between the shoreline and the back of the new pavilions. We get at least two in there, maybe three, depending on what's, what's available. Uh, the other option is, again, is to remove the Australian pines. Uh, replace with a pre-engineered style pavilion, uh, and that pavilion is in a, in a backup, uh, something similar to that. Uh, it's a metal pavilion with a metal roof on it. Uh, they're pre-engineered, uh, and then the approximate cost should be between, about the same between either way we want to go. Uh, I would like to say, if we can, is to actually make this a, a continuous replacement as we go along. They are reaching their end. Uh, they've been used many, many a times. And somewhere in, somewhere in the near distant future, we should replace them all. Uh, the pre-engineered one I look, I put on there, kind of matches what we have out there already with the pavilion that's out on the beach, and also the restroom. Somewhat close to it, not 100% close to it, but more of the style with the, with the green color roof. I'm ready for questions.
Um, let's go to a public comment first, and we'll go to commission questions and comments. Do you have any public comment on this item?
Hello again. Robin Sanger, 1630 Lonesome Pine Lane, Tarpon Springs. I'd like to speak to a facet of this proposal, and that is the removal of the Australian pines.
Yes, ma'am.
I remember several years ago, we actually were going to get a grant to remove all of those Australian pines, and that fell through, but I remember being so excited about it. If you don't know, Australian pines are not really pine trees. They're invasive. They encourage beach erosion. They displace native plants. And they outcompete native plant vegetation by producing the dense leaf litter that's below them. They have a very shallow root system, so even the ones that remain, were we to have high winds, are very likely to blow over and possibly damage the new shelters. So I'd like to see this facet of this as part of a larger program to get rid of this dangerous invasive tree. It provides little or no wildlife habitat, and we do have native trees that provide both shade and habitat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Anita Protas, 901 Bayshore Drive. This is a little history lesson. You're in babyland when the pavilion was built, which Dudley Sally's father, who was Colonel Sally, was an engineer and did the road out to the island when, uh, the American, uh, club, uh, military was going to have the convention back here many, many years ago. That island was loaded with Australian pines. And growing up, I can remember all of us going out there, and you could hear the wind blowing through those pine trees. It was a lot of pine trees. And then a hurricane came, and they dredged, and a lot of them died. So, they've been on that, out at the municipal beach for over 100 years. I hate to see them all come down, because it's historical that some are there. And they were beautiful in those days. People went out there. It was cool, but things have changed. So if you can leave a few, please leave a few for historic preservation, because that's what was out there. Among all the, uh, uh, picnic tables, people would sit under them, the benches, and when we had the pier pavilion out there. But that's what was there many, many years ago. More of the Australian pines of any island in Pinellas County.
Pier to Wax, 504 Ashland Avenue. Really kind of a simple issue, and the only decision I'm really seeing at this point is, do you rebuild something that matches the old, or you put something in that is new? And so from looking at the backup, I would recommend going with the new style, because then as you replace the other units, it appears to be a very open, uh, structure. It's, you know, the columns aren't as big, so it's not so confining within it. But, uh, as you move forward, it'll be probably easier to continue to add with the new structure. So I would just say, uh, let's go with the new one with the green roof. Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Eisner, 1515 Riverside Drive. The only thing I'd like to add to this, uh, discussion is being that we have a shortage of quite a few things. Let's kind of look and make sure we can get the supplies for whatever you're gonna decide to do, because stuff is backordered for months and possibly years. So that would be the only recommendation I would make. Thank you.
Any other public comments on this tonight? I'd just like to say thank you. There's a lot more public comments than I thought there was gonna be on the pavilion, so it's great to hear that. Tom, a quick question for you. Uh, is the, the post for option number two, I believe it is? So you're looking for direction, either replace it with the existing style or go with the pre-engineered prefab style?
Yes.
Is that just, is that all metal? Is that, is that right?
Yes, it's, it's all metal.
Okay, and it's engineered for a certain level of hurricane speed?
Wind loads and all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, same, like, area that it would take up, or it'd be more of a bigger space that it would take up?
Well, that'd be, uh, would be an option we could look at. Of course, more space you take up, less, uh, more, uh, impervious surface you have. But, uh, we can work on that. You'd probably end up getting a little bit more room with the pre-engineered. Again, it's because the columns aren't so big.
Yeah.
You don't have the center column in there either. Uh, but we can look at that. I can bring that back. Once we find out something that, uh, we fit, works best over here, we can bring it back and have you take a look at it.
Yeah, I know there's a couple of them that are bigger. I think there's one or two that are bigger than the rest of them, but it is nicer to have a little bit more space with a few more, because I do see large parties that are out there in a small space. So, um, if there is a couple of options to make a few of them a little bit bigger, I think that would be good as we move forward with replacing the other ones. Um, there is also an oak tree already there, I think, where one's being proposed. So I'm assuming that with the Australian pines on the, um, what is it? The northeast portion of the kind of roundabout area.
Right.
Um, if they're going down, I'm sure we'll be able to sneak in some more trees if we can. We're gonna see what they can fit, right?
Yeah, I would like to do that, definitely. There's some areas here that, when we can move along as we go too, we can make this as a project every couple of years, or every year when we replace one of these.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe replace the Australian pines in the same, at the same time, and, and do it in sections. That way, it's not so much of an impact, and you can actually be able to save some if, if, if that's what the board, uh,
Okay.
the board directs.
Sounds good. I mean, I, I'm, in my opinion, I, I do like the, the option to replace it with a pre-engineered, uh, new style. I think it looks better with also the columns are, are smaller. Um, you can see through them better, and I think you could, you'd probably fit more people in there. Uh, Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, just out of curiosity, um, how many Australian pines do we have out there? Do we have a count, or?
I don't have an exact count. I, I, I think it was 31. Because multiple, multiple, multiple ones, like the one we have here, there's actually two right there. Uh, I haven't done an exact count, but we'll, I can go and get the, a tree survey done on to and give you a number if you'd like. So it's easy enough to do.
Okay. Um, and then what's the, what's the timeline for the other pavilions? I know you just mentioned maybe it'd be a yearly thing or something like that. I was just wondering, as far as future budgets go, if that's just gonna be kind of a rolling? We're gonna do one a year, or two a year, or, uh, you know, something rather than doing them all at once, where it would be like a big, big chunk of change?
I would like to do two, if I could. Uh, as far as timeframe goes, I would like to see this every year. I'll put it in every year in the budget, and then the board can make the decision you want to. And, and with it, with the, we have eight out there, so no reason why in not three or four years, these are all complete and changed out.
Yeah. Do you see any failing further this year?
No, we're keeping a pretty good eye on them. We're just out there power washing them again, probably, I think, two weeks. Uh, and we paint them up all the time. Uh, so I, I don't see anyone fail. If they fail, they come unsafe, of course, we'll react on them right away, so.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I, I agree with most of the comments that have been said as far as option two goes. I like the pre-engineered style.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yeah, I, I agree with the, uh, pre-engineered. But, uh, just to be specific, have, have you actually looked into whether they're available for our wind speed and exposure category out there?
Yeah, a couple of companies I looked at and who says they do have them engineered for Florida, so yes. And I buy, uh, the one that, actually, the one you have in front of you, I think, was a company that put them out in Orlando for Disney.
Do they look like what you're showing us, or maybe not?
Uh, pretty close to it over there. Multiple different styles we'll look at.
But similar?
Similar, yes, sir.
Okay. I, I agree with that, as long as we can get something that's similar. Um, sometimes when you do these things with the, uh, wind speed, especially exposure category out at Sunset Beach, there, they tend to be a little more like option one.
Yes.
As far as the, uh, structure goes, and, and I don't think that's what we want to do. But I think in any case, I think the pre-engineered, uh, would be the best way to go anyway. Um, and the material is, um, it looks like it's wood, but would it be really wood? Or might be steel columns or aluminum columns?
Steel columns.
Steel columns, okay. And we'll do the epoxy, the whole thing, to make sure that they don't rust.
Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, and then the, um, do you know what the framework would be? Would that be steel as well?
Definitely, yes. I would like to stay away from wood more than I can.
Yeah, I, that's the only concern I have is the steel. Obviously, if it was aluminum, it'd be much more expensive anyway, but, but we just, that's the only concern I have, is the steel doesn't work well near steel, uh, seawater. The, um, and as far as the sizes, I, I agree, um, with varying the sizes a bit, um, and making sure that the minimum that we replace it with is, is no less than what we have right now at each of the locations. I know the, this is the spot that the one was taken down, I think, last year, because it was deemed to be dangerous, or, yeah. And so I'm kind of glad we're starting with that location.
Yes.
And, um, as of right now, for, this is just direction for you tonight, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if you, if you come back with two, we'll have a, a second location that, um, I'm hoping the staff will recommend the second location, rather than leaving it up to the commission as far as where it would go, the second one, I guess, is what we're gonna do.
Definitely. And I would probably recommend going in each section, like, there's two in that section there. I'd love to do both of those over there, and then move on, so we, we stay consistent throughout the process.
Right, and when you come back, if you could confirm, I know the, um, the Australian pines, I know the state, maybe about 10 or 15 years ago, um, I don't wanna call them outlawed, but they created a hit list on some of these invasive trees, like the mucca lucca, and the, um, um, the Brazilian pepper's always been that way. I don't know whether the Australian pine is on that list or not. Do, do you know?
It were a few years back over here, I remember my, I love it.
They, they were?
They were, yes, sir.
Okay. Um, and as far as the replacement trees, I think this would be, given the timing, um, uh, yeah, yeah, but... And as far as the replacement trees, I think this would be, given the timing, yeah, but by the way, before I leave the Australian pines, I also agree with Ms. Protas that I think we need to keep a couple just as a historical, and maybe put a marker there to, to kind of give people a feel for what it was like way back, because that was the easiest place to fall asleep in Tarpon Springs, listening to the wind blowing through those Australian pines. There's no soother sound that you could ever hear than the breeze going through Australian pines with those fine pine needles. So, there's a lot of memories for me out there as well. The oak trees that you would replace it with, I don't know whether you're talking about live oak, water oak, or whatever, but maybe if Ms. Brewer could identify a couple that we're going to get cut down on some of these sites that we're locating, and get our tree spade.
Sure.
To actually relocate some mature trees over there, I think that would be better. I, I would hate to think that we're going to put two, two-inch minimum, in other words, the regulatory size, two-inch out there, and just watch them grow for fifty years when we've got opportunity to, to use a tree spade at some locations that are going to be removed anyway, and move them out there. So, I, I hope we're a little proactive in that regard. This year, in this year's budget, I think we've got one budgeted. I think the city manager told me he thought that he could do at least the one within this current budget. That's why we didn't really get into it with the fiscal year 2022, but do you think there would be money enough if we approve going with the pre-engineered, about sixty or seventy thousand, to do two of them?
Yeah, I'm actually hoping it's going to be a little bit less, depending on, well, once we decide which, which manufacturer we're going with, and if, do I have the availability to do someone in the working house. If I can get them pre-engineered, my, I do have concrete crews, I'm going to look at the possibility of doing that. That would save some money, and give me the opportunity to do two if I can.
Yeah, and the slabs, I know the one slab y'all took out, the city crews took out when the old, and I imagine we're going to have to demolish the other slabs as well, because of the, 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 the location of the uprights and everything's going to be different.
Yeah, and I'll have to do the new, new type of footers on top of those over there, so yes.
And.
And they're capable of doing that very easily, so.
And the last thing, as far as amenities, like, I don't know what our policy is, but as far as barbecue grills, or, I know we've got some old.
We, we have them. We replace them on occasions over there. Those barbecue grills are out there, yes, sir.
So, we'll have one or two to put at this, at the new locations here already?
Oh, yes, I already have them in stock anyhow, so.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you very much. And when's your timeframe for bringing this back, do you think?
I'm going to make a couple of phone calls next, now probably tomorrow, see where I can find these, get moving on this. Hopefully, sooner rather than later. I would like, I like to have it moving by sometime, it'll probably be January, February, depending on, on the supply.
Is this something Ms. Lewis is going to have to put out the bid?
I'm trying to find, there's actually a number of municipal contracts out there.
Oh, okay.
So, there's availability, they're actually fairly popular.
That sounds good.
So, I'm going to try to go that way.
So, maybe in two months or so?
I would love to. I'd love to begin. Be a little busy at Christmas, hopefully.
We'll be looking.
Be else going on, but I'd like to get it done, yes.
All right, all right. Thank you, Mr. Funch.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor, if I may add something. Vice Mayor, I wanted, we've got a lot of good direction here tonight. I appreciate that. There was one other thing. Tom, you mentioned the idea of the color of the roof. We've got some options with that steel roof, and you were suggesting we consider perhaps the green color to correspond with the existing pavilion out there?
Yeah, that's my recommendation. I'll bring that back, but yeah, I like to match all the roofs, so they all stay the same.
I think green is fine.
Yeah.
I mean.
As long as they match.
Yes.
From one, for all of them, is that correct? Commissioner Donovan? Okay, yeah.
Just, I've got one comment about the Australian pines. I know they're invasive. It's probably worse stepping on an Australian pine pine cone little ball than stepping on a sansper barefoot. Not a fun experience, but I'm going to say, it is probably the most comfortable spot on the beach, is on the southeast side of the beach, in the playground area, where the Australian pines are, where it's really shady, and it's a perfect spot to take a nap. But I, I do understand it's on the invasive list, and I understand the need to, to eventually remove them, so thank you for bringing that forward. But I do agree, it is a very comfortable spot, because there's not a whole lot of shade out there, until the oak trees do get mature. But I do have to say, it is not a fun thing to step on one of those things barefoot. With that, we will entertain, or I will entertain a motion, if there's one on the board.
Motion to accept the option two, which I believe is the pre-engineered, with the direction that the commission gave Mr. Funch and has recorded this evening.
Second.
Okay, do we want to, is there any details that we want to add? Color, things along those lines, or we just want to leave that up to staff based on what we talked about?
I think they got direction.
Okay, it's clear? Mr. Smith?
Yes, thank you.
Roll call?
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move on to item number three, increase file number 210102-B-JL Utility Rehabilitation and Construction Services Rebid. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, yes. This is an ongoing contract. We've been utilizing this vehicle for over five years very successfully. There's actually three contractors that we selected to rotate, and this is to do various utility work, particularly emergency repairs, sometimes large ones. But we also use it for new infrastructure, like, we've got a new water line going in River Village area, and we want to use that contract to continue work like that. So, this item here is a request to increase the authorization by four hundred thousand, really as a sign of the work that we're getting done.
Okay, we're going to, before we go to public comments, can you just clarify, this is just, where would the funding come out of? Mr. Smith?
Yes, this will be funded by the Water and Sewer Utility Fund, and it's both capital projects and operational fund, depending on the type of work.
Okay, great. Do we have any public comments on this item tonight? Seeing none? Do we have any commissioner comments? Commissioner Donovan? Commissioner Vaticiotis?
None.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes. Item number fourteen on Special Consent Agenda Award File Number 220020-C-AS Water Meter and Backflow Prevention Materials Through Hillsborough County, B.O.O.C., Contract Number 21228, comma, two. Mr. Smith?
This contract's to allow us to continue to purchase meter parts for us to do both our citywide changeover to automatic meter reading, but also replacing meters throughout the city, large meters for industrial accounts and other various equipment that goes along with it, like backflow preventers. So, this is a contract through Hillsborough County. It's been competitively bid by them. It gives us the best pricing, and that is the single-source provider of the equipment that we use.
Are there any public comments on this item tonight? Okay, Mr. Smith, how many more of these do we have, do you know?
The last number I saw was over eight thousand of about ten thousand meters have been changed out. So, we're, I think, past the eighty percent mark. It's been a long-term project, but we've been doing it in-house versus paying a lot of money for a contract to do it. So, it's been successful. We appreciate your patience, but it is paying off, and it certainly helps our efficiency. And it also helps customers, it has a diagnostic component to it, where you can actually pull, like, past weeks of water use and see very fine detail, so we can help customers find out where the problem is.
How do they get back to the city? Is it through, like, Wi-Fi or cell?
They actually drive the streets, and it picks up with an antenna in the vehicle, so it really speeds things up. The old way, which is still a small part of the city, we have to do that. You have to get out, open those lids, all the insects that can get you when you do that, and open up the sandy box there and read the numbers. So, it's quite a, an advancement from that.
Yeah, it's kind of like when they're delivering milk, right? At the same time? Okay. Are there any other public comments, or commissioner comments? Commissioner Donovan?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank Mr. Smith and Ms. Lewis on their, for their effort on this. This is one of those things, it's not super flashy, but it makes a big difference, so thank you guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
No.
All right, do we have a motion?
Motion approved. Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes. All right, ordinance number fifteen has been deferred to November sixteenth. That was announced earlier tonight. We're going to move on to resolutions. Item number sixteen, this is resolution twenty, hold on one second. Twenty twenty-one-five-six, authorize execution of agreement with FDOT for L.A. LAP program funding for Tarpon Avenue project. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, this is a program that staff has been working on very heavily. I'd like to credit Bob Robertson for leading this up, but to get this certification through DOT is no small feat, and to, to get certified with the LAP program, and Bob can elaborate some more, allows you to be eligible for DOT grants, and that's exactly what this is. And I'm going to ask Bob Robertson to give some more detail about it.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director, so as Mr. Smith said for this item, we're asking the board to authorize the mayor, or in this case, the vice mayor, to execute an agreement with the Florida Department of Environmental, Department of Transportation, known as a local agency program agreement, or LAP agreement. Through this agreement, the state will be providing nearly seven hundred thousand dollars of construction funding for safety upgrades on Tarpon Avenue between US-19 and Huey. Upgrades would include shoulder widening, asphalt milling and resurfacing, restriping, some geometric realignment, additional signage, sidewalk and ADA upgrades, and an upgraded turn signal at the Publix-Walmart intersection, providing four-way protected turns, i.e. turn, green turn arrows on each, on each of the four turns. So, Mr. Vice Mayor, that's a short summary of this item, and back to you for questions.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comments on this item tonight? Item sixteen? Okay, a couple of questions for you. Bob, thank you again for working on this one, and this has been a long time coming. Is someone on staff LAP certified now, or is it just like a per-project certification?
So, for this one, we started the, we, will be a single-project certification, and Nick Macris is my project supervisor. He's heading up as the, as my LAP expert for, for this project.
Okay, you're not trying to LAP them then, right? Let's see, so for clarification, it's each intersection, or each direction has its own arrow, because like, turning in the Walmart's parking lot, or going in the Publix is like really difficult to see, so there's a dedicated arrow that's going to be there for that then?
For each, yes, correct.
I know it's been a lot of complaints about the safety of the intersection. How long have we been working on this? It's been quite some time, right?
Yeah, it's, it's been about a two-year process to get us through the design and get the certification.
Mm-hmm.
The design is done, by the way. We are, we're, we're ready to go as soon as we get all the paperwork cleared up. We'll be looking to get the paperwork signed with DOT, which can take a little bit of time, but we should be ready to put the project out to bid no later than December this year.
Okay, with an anticipation start time after season, probably?
Yeah, well, yes. I mean, the procurement process is going to take a little longer, because we have to follow some more stricter guidelines per DOT, but the idea would be to issue notice proceeding sometime in February.
Okay, well. And then, for clarification, Huey, where the buses take a right-hand turn on the Tarpon Avenue, it's really like a tight turn, that's going to be widened a lot, right? So, they could make an easier turn?
Yes, it is. The board approved, and Duke gave, granted us a clip on that corner to make a nice wide turn for buses that leave Huey to go towards nineteen, and also for our fire trucks as well, so they don't have to encroach onto the oncoming traffic.
Clip cars when they're going around the corner, right?
I know, it's a big safety concern there.
Yeah, no, this is awesome. This is, I think, a great thing to celebrate overall. First, getting a ton of money from this DOT for this, that we don't have to put up ourselves. And secondly, I mean, you should, you should be congratulated with your team for putting the work behind this and getting this funding, so thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
And working hard to get that. Commissioner Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. I don't have any questions. This is just something, again, really excited to see move forward. This is probably the most dangerous area to drive in Tarpon Springs. I can't really see, no matter which way I'm turning. You see so many pedestrians get caught kind of in the middle, and then they're standing on the median, they don't know where to go. It's like playing Frogger. This is a, a really great project that I'm excited to see move forward, so thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
The, we've got public comments as well after this, right?
I think I want the public comment already.
You did already?
Yeah.
Okay. As I understand, we have, we already have the grant conditioned on completing the LAP certification, is that correct?
Correct.
So, we're, we're good in that regard?
Yes.
The, the six hundred and eighty thousand dollars or so that the grant is for, and now our cost estimate is seven hundred and something, is that an old estimate or a new estimate? I guess what I'm getting at, are we going to get caught up, and we still have to put that out the bid, I would assume? Is that correct?
That's right, yeah.
Okay.
And the funding is six ninety-five. Our current estimate is right around that number. In fact, it's a little bit less. Our engineers have updated it, so we're, you know, but as, I understand what your point is, it, we could have to come up with some funding. We'll know when the bids come back.
No, I'm okay. I mean, we, we're going to do the project one way or the other. I don't have any issue with it. I was just kind of trying to understand the, the grant process itself, because in the, in the agreement, it basically said that they could go up or down depending on what the bids came in at.
Yeah.
So, I'm hoping if they come in at, you know, a million two or something like that, that FDOT would, would be able to supplement that six hundred and whatever it is that they were going to, that they agreed to. Is that something that we would have to request that they do, or is that something that, I, I know we have to provide them everything? I mean, the bids, everything, and we also have to satisfy the FDOT standards as far as the way they do business and everything, which I've got confidence that we're going to do. I don't have any issue with that either. But is that something that we're going to have to kind of work with them to get additional money, or would, is that something that, I'm not familiar with the LAP certification and the grants, but is that something that they would automatically supplement themselves without having to go out and ask them to do so? Do you know?
I don't believe it's an automatic. If the bids were to come in higher, I think that's a process we'd have to, to investigate with the DOT and explore, because I, they have this limited amount of funding that they distribute statewide, so that's going to have to be a decision that the numbers will have to make, really.
The, and we're still working on the permits, right? That's the one, I keep giving people the reason of why we have, other than the LAP certification, the, we're still waiting on the permits to come in, is that correct?
No, we're good to go now.
We're good to go.
Yeah, this was the final step here.
And we've got the construction plan, so we're ready to bid the project after tonight, is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's why I said by December. I'm trying to give myself space because DOT can take some time in getting this stuff back to us.
By December to put it out to bid or just by December to, okay. So by December, we'll go out to bid because we have to involve FDOT in that as well. Okay. And so perhaps maybe the approval would come in maybe March timeframe, do you think?
I was hoping for February.
For a contract and then maybe shortly after their construction. Okay. Yeah, I, that's, it's a great idea. I mean, as far as the opportunity to clear up that intersection. But I know you've got a big person watching over your shoulder.
Right.
And sometimes we do a lot more work than what we need to in that regard. So just be patient. Thank you for
For sure.
For staying with it so far.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor Carr.
Thank you. One quick question. They're going to replace the string lights that go over the intersection with like large columns, like that, like more pole ones? Or do you know about that yet?
Yeah, I do. They, they, they have to remain as they are. We looked at doing the mast arms and there's just not enough right-of-way to put in the structural support columns for mast arms that you're talking about. So they have, we have to stick with the string, as you say.
Okay.
Strand, they call them strands, but.
Strands, okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the acceptance of the grant, is that, okay.
It's a resolution, right?
Approve the resolution authorizing the vice mayor to sign.
So, so, yeah, so, second.
All right, roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr.
Yes. We're moving to item number 17. This is Resolution 2021-55, Application 21-51 Final Plat Eagle Creek Estates, Klosterman Road. This is quasi-judicial, city attorney. Can you please read the title and explain the quasi-judicial process and swear on anyone testifying? As a reminder, you're going to have four minutes to speak after the city manor, after the city attorney speaks.
Resolution 2021-55, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving the final subdivision plat. Application 2151 Eagle Creek Estates, accepting all offers of dedication as described in said plat, authorizing the appropriate city officials to certify approval thereon and providing for an effective date. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding. The, the staff will make a presentation first, followed by any opposition from any members of the audience. There will be an opportunity for cross-examination of the staff and staff will have an opportunity to cross-examine any opponents. The commission will then go into executive session, executive session to make a final decision. With that said, anyone planning on providing any testimony, please rise and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Evening, Vice Mayor Commissioners, Renee Vincent, Planning Director. Again, this is a resolution to approve Application 21-51. This is the final plat for Eagle Creek Estates. I did provide earlier today an updated slide just to provide a little additional information. This is a private subdivision, so all the streets, utilities, stormwater, everything will be private. And I did want to make sure that everybody understood that this plat does include a bond for the remaining infrastructure. The call, the, the amount of that bond is about $414,500. Just for comparison, the total infrastructure costs were 1.78 million. So this is a fraction of it. And actually, if you went through the, the bond documents that were pretty deep in the backup, the biggest chunk of that was for the road. And actually, the roadway has already, has been constructed since this was done. So all the streets do contain entry rights to the city to provide services and emergency access rights to the city for the drainage and utility easements just in case and a balance of caution if we need to get in there and do something. So at this point, staff does recommend approval of Resolution 2021-55, approving the final plat for Eagle Creek Estates.
And Vice Mayor, if I could just let you know, I was interacting with your planning staff today. And your code does provide that as part of this is a bond and approving, that the commission has to approve the bond. And since the form of, or the wording of the resolution doesn't outright say that, I just want to make sure that when you get to the point of a motion, that whoever makes the motion clarifies that part of that motion is to approve the associated bond.
Okay, thank you. I believe we're going to go to commission comments for staff. My comment or question would be, I'm not familiar with the bond portion of it. This is something new. I haven't really seen this before in the past. What's the reasoning behind all of it?
It's, we don't typically have a lot of these, but we have had them in the past. So essentially, there's some remaining infrastructure improvements that typically, in order to approve a plat, you either have to have all the infrastructure done and certified, or you have to bond out. And so you have, you have the engineer's estimates of those costs. And then, so the bond is to the benefit of the city. If the, if the required improvements aren't completed within one year, we can call the bond and finish getting the improvements done ourselves. So that's the purpose of the bond. They, they don't have a lot left to do. So in this instance, they are, and the reason that they're asking for that is it, once they go to plat, it does allow them to go ahead and start marketing and selling lots. So it's, sometimes it's just a timing issue with the developer.
Okay. Commissioner Donovan, do you have any questions for staff?
I don't have any questions for staff, thanks.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Nothing for the staff, thank you.
I think, city attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, do we go to the applicant now?
That's correct.
Does the applicant like to present a presentation? If so, please come to the microphone, state your name and address. Could be your business address for the record.
I could not do that.
Gary Miller with David Weekly Homes. I'm Land Development Manager. Address is 3309 Northdale Boulevard, Suite 280E. I don't have a presentation I wanted to prepare or to, to offer, but I'm going to answer any questions you might have and I appreciate your approval on this.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Vaticiotis?
I have one, actually two questions, but the one is probably more important. Who came up with the name of Gopher Lane, or Gopher Loop?
I'm going to put this on the record. It was kind of set in jest internally because I spent a fortune on gopher tortoise relocation on this project. And we didn't really think that Pinellas County would let that get through. And sure enough, it got through.
I think it's a great name. Congratulations on it.
Thank you.
And also the coup with Pinellas County too, so. The second question was the, it, this is something a little close to me with a little playground equipment. I, I know y'all are going to be under construction and, and that's going to come in at some point is to, to go ahead and seed that with equipment and things. I know it, it's going to be up to you and I think that was decided to work it out with the staff. But that'll be towards the end of the homes or at some point in between?
Probably some point in between. Will start sooner than later.
Fair enough. Thank you very much, Mr. Miller.
One, one minor comment on the bond. As staff pointed out, we, we paved on September 29th and we had a substantial completion walk on the 8th of October. So the bond far exceeds what's left to be done as far as the infrastructure that was approved.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I've got just two quick questions.
Sure.
When do you anticipate starting building houses? Is that going to be happening pretty soon?
Yeah, they're going to kick into the permitting process as soon as the plat's approved. So they, they have everything ready to go. They've just been waiting for the approval on the plat.
Okay, do you have a estimated completion time or goal for completion, like end of '22 or anything like that?
It's 50 single-family detached lots, so I don't remember what their projections on the takedown was, but it's probably two years.
You could probably all sell them all tomorrow, right, with the market?
If we could get windows, yeah.
Yeah. I don't remember the site plan, but I know there's like a giant wall that, that the development has going towards the wetlands. I'm assuming there's a fence that's going to be there, right? To prevent people from going off that cliff?
Yeah, we have retaining walls on the west property line and on the east property line. And then we have a two-tiered retaining wall around the pond that ties into the east. And we'll have fencing on, on all of it.
Okay, great. Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, Mr. City Attorney, is this, when we go to, I'll leave it to you.
The, before applicant leave, so do you have any questions of the city staff on their presentation, sir?
I do not.
And staff, do you have any examination of the applicant?
No.
Okay, then at this time, it would be time for any citizen comment.
Okay, so any public comment for or against the application?
Anita Frodos, 901 Bay Shore Drive. Let's remember, every development that comes into Tarpon Springs is a bloodline to our community. It brings in money. It brings in people to utilize our hospital, our doctors, our restaurants, our grocery stores, penny for Pinellas County, and not to mention what comes in on utilities. Development's not bad. It's a lifeline. If you don't take development in your community, your community dies, whether you like it or not. And with today's watchdogs, they're not going to do anything they're not supposed to do. I don't know this gentleman. I know the land because I know the people that used to own it. It's going to be a beautiful development as I drive by it. I, I know it will be. You just look at how they've designed, designed it. But remember, you're the keepers of this community. And you are the bankers of this community. And we've got to keep our community alive with development and people coming in to spend their money and leave it here and make our businesses grow. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments on this item tonight? Item number 17. Seeing none, city attorney.
So at this point, you would close the hearing and take it to executive session and a motion.
Okay, did we want to, does staff have a report they want to put in the backup or anything along those lines? Did you say that or?
The, yeah, you can enter into the record the, the staff report that was included in the agenda backup as well as the revised slide, which was also added to the agenda backup.
So the public portion's closed. Do we have any commissioner comments on this item?
Well, you mean among the commission?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I, the, what I want to say is that I know we put David Weekly Homes through the wringer when we got started on this project. The sidewalks on the one side, the width of the road, the parking, the fencing along the perimeters, a whole list of, the mini park that was approved, a whole list of things. And I know during the construction, there was a lot of kind of questions because of the way you start out and you've got to almost start from a, at least at that location with the amount of grading that had to be done, almost with a blank canvas, and then do your grading, put your utilities in your roads and everything else. So I, I know there was a lot of, there was a period there where things were fairly unsightly. There was also some sensitive times with regard to the rainy season and, and the amount of water that was on-site and that so forth. So I know this is all behind us now and I'm looking forward to seeing new families move into that, into that development. And this is for the plat, is that correct, our resolution? So I've got full confidence, all these things that I just mentioned have been approved and I have full confidence that our staff is going to make sure that they get implemented. And if they don't, we'll probably hear about it. So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay. No other comments? As a reminder, city attorney, can you remind the board what we need to include in the, in a motion, please?
So you would be, the motion would be to adopt Resolution Number 2021-55 and clarifying that that motion includes approving of the associated bond.
Okay. Motion to adopt Resolution 2021-55 and the corresponding bond for raining infrastructure.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Carr?
Yes. Well, that concludes the regular session agenda. We're going to go to staff comments. Police Chief, thank you for being here. Any comments tonight?
No comments, sir, thank you.
Okay, city attorney, thank you for being here tonight.
Nothing, Vice Mayor.
Nothing, all right. Mr. Smith, thank you for filling in for Mr. Lacour. It's great for you to be here. Good job. Any comments?
Thank you, no further comments.
All right, I was looking forward to some. All right. Ms. Jacobs, any comments?
No comments, thank you.
All right, thank you for being here tonight. Commissioner Donovan, any comments?
No comments, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Commissioner Vaticiotis?
I do have one. It's just, I want to make sure that I recognize the, all the activity that's going on in town right now. We're coming out of COVID. I mean, all the special events that are occurring and, and not just having the events, but the attendance of those events by people is just phenomenal. And, and I, we've got some other ones coming up. The holidays are going to break here pretty soon. It's, it's going to be a good time for Tarpon Springs. I'm looking forward to it. So thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo that too. I was at the farmer's market this weekend. I was in downtown, I believe, Friday or, I think it was Friday night or Thursday night. And there was a lot going on. So I really enjoyed the farmer's market. There's a lot of great things going on. We have a ton of small businesses in Tarpon Springs. So let's continue to shop local, support our local businesses. They're really living the dream and the American dream that we have. We have multiple ribbon cuttings as well coming up. We're looking forward to participating in those. And the mayor will be back at our next meeting. At 7:46, I adjourn the meeting.